Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Here.
Ms. Monroe.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt.
Here.
Mr. Shoup.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
And Mr. Shoup, would you give the invocation, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Father, we come to you just now, and we seek your grace. We seek your mercy. Father, we ask for your wisdom. We pray now that you would give us courage to do what is right, to make good decisions, wise decisions, according to your love and kindness, and according to your wisdom and your justice. We ask, Father, that you would guide us as we look to the future of our city and of each and every citizen, that your will would be accomplished in all that's done here this evening. Please, Father, help us. In the name of Jesus Christ, we ask this. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. It's wonderful to see everybody. We have a few people, a few council members and our city auditor on Zoom, so we are all here in Accountant Four. So let's first take a look at consideration of work session meeting minutes, March 16th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Abstain.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right. In consideration of regular meeting minutes, March 24th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I do believe Joe Hackman did a great job of tweaking. It's very easy to hear everybody, which is great, which was a little bit of a challenge last time. So thank you, Joe Hackman, for doing that.
I think he told me it cost him like $11, so.
There we go. All right.
He figured it out.
We'll take that.
Well spent.
So we do not have any previous business, so we'll move right on to new business. Number one, ordinance number 2020-033.
Ordinance number 2020-033 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Rack &amp; Ballour Excavating Company Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Rack &amp; Ballour Excavating in the amount of $623,846.70 for the downtown pedestrian safety improvement project, which is being supported by an ODOT Safety Fund grant.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment?
Just want to point out that these grants are something that takes a lot of planning. It's been in the works for a long time. It's smart for us to take advantage of that opportunity as long as it is out there. I know there's a lot of debates on whether they should exist at all, but they do, and so we're doing that. I just be aware that some people might think we're spending all the money 100% ourselves, and it's something we shouldn't do right now, but it's not really 100% city funds. And so it's just something that's been in the works for a while, so I'm glad we're following through with it.
Yes.
Thank you. And that's important to note, just because of things that are happening now, there's been a long process, and some of these have been in the works for a long time. So thank you for identifying that.
In this particular case, this one is 90%.
Right. 90, 90/10.
We're only doing 10% of this.
That's huge.
We need to take advantage of this when we have it. And I want to commend our city manager and our city engineer, because I think on this one, our projected budget or our budgeted amount was like 400, within like $400 or $500 of what this ended up being. So we have some experienced and very able leadership there, and I'm grateful for it.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Also, just to clarify, we'll add, because it is kind of a hot topic, but you know, if I had my druthers, we would be able to keep our money local in the first place, and we wouldn't have to give it to the state and then ask for it back. I don't like that. I think they should change that, but until they do, you know.
This is what we have to work with.
Yeah, this is what we have to work with.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
All right. Number two, ordinance number 2020-034.
Ordinance number 2020-034 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Elix Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Elix Incorporated in the amount of $217,021.40 for the bypass 48 Kingsview Drive Traffic Signal Replacement Project. This project was budgeted and is being funded out of the electric fund.
Great. Entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes. Number three, ordinance number 2020-035.
Ordinance number 2020-035 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Jim Clark &amp; Sons Excavating LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the Jim Clark Excavating in the amount of $296,743 for the Colonial Park Regional Retention Pond Project. This retention pond is going to provide stormwater detention for three significant projects along the North Broadway Corridor, the 511 North Broadway Development, the Warren County Convention Center that's currently almost complete with construction, and then the city's fire station project. So we worked with EPA to kind of get this regional detention strategy in place so that it will not only serve those developments, but also be a park amenity for residents as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right. Number four, resolution number 2020-036.
Resolution number 2020-036 is a resolution approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects, an affidavit under Ohio Vice Code Chapter 1710, and approving the necessity of acquiring, installing, equipping, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Lebanon, Ohio, in cooperation with the Warren County Energy Special Improvement District. This is for the 401 Neil Armstrong Way Project.
Thank you. Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to approve the petition and supplemental plan for pace project financing for the Leo Brown Group Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Development. As Mark mentioned, that'll be constructed this summer off of Neil Armstrong Way. The financing is being administered through the Warren County Port Authority, but with the development being in the city, it needs City of Lebanon approval to be able to take advantage of it.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Number five, ordinance number 2020-037.
Ordinance number 2020-037 is an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, installation, equipment, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Lebanon, Ohio, in cooperation with the Warren County Energy Special Improvement District at 401 Neil Armstrong Way Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will determine to proceed with certain improvements associated with the Leo Brown Group, who are doing business as Lebanon Senior Partners, Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Project, in cooperation with the Warren County Energy Special Improvement District, or ESID.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
All right. Number six, ordinance number 2020-038.
Ordinance number 2020-038 is an ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, installing, equipping, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Lebanon, Ohio, in cooperation with the Warren County Energy Special Improvement District, and approving project documents for the 401 Neil Armstrong Way Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will levy special assessments for certain improvements, which all of those improvements are energy efficiency type improvements, LED lighting, HVAC systems, et cetera, that are associated with the Leo Brown Group Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Project in cooperation with the Warren County ESID.
Thank you. And a motion to adopt. A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Number seven, resolution number 2020-039.
Resolution number 2020-039 is a resolution consenting to the execution of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County, Ohio, and Lebanon Senior Partners LLC to complete a project within an enterprise zone of Warren County.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
We have a second. Thank you. A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Number eight, resolution number 2020-040.
Resolution number 2020-040 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to reduce the comprehensive permit fees associated with the Traditions of Lebanon Project.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to reduce the utility-related tap fees for the Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Project to $100,000.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes. Number nine, ordinance number 2020-041.
Ordinance number 2020-041 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Lebanon Police Employees Association and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Supervisors Unit of the Lebanon Police Employees Association, or LPEA, bargaining unit which establishes wages and contract provisions that are consistent with the other two units of the LPEA.
A motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Number 10, ordinance number 2020-042.
Ordinance number 2020-042 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to extend the development and economic incentive agreement with North Broadway Apartments LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize a 90-day extension to the project completion dates associated with the 511 North Broadway Avenue redevelopment project in response to the coronavirus pandemic and the economic uncertainty that it's created.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to discussion items. Mr. Brunka's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of coronavirus reminders or updates. Again, the city is not, we've temporarily suspended all utility disconnects, and we've temporarily suspended late fees associated with utility bills. So I just want to continue to get that message out to folks that the city has taken action in both of those areas. We also have followed suit with the state and extended the tax filing deadline to July 15th, so it's consistent with both the federal and the state deadline at this point. Our parks are open. We're seeing lots of folks using the trails, which is great. Just ask the folks, you know, maintain the six-foot separation. Obviously, our playgrounds and some of the actual features are closed. And I know we did have a discussion, Mayor, earlier about the potential for a work session next week. The agenda looks pretty light, so we'll kind of, once we kind of get that final agenda, reach out, but we may be.
So that everybody knows, but it looks like it's pretty minimal and to potentially not having a meeting next week and be able to vote on just those, there are a couple of grants and one other thing that we could probably take care of in a voting meeting, especially with everything that's going on. And it would probably be, I think, okay to not have a work session and just do a voting meeting. But you can share that.
Yeah, I'll email all the agenda items out to council and take a look.
Okay. Do you want to do any update on the grant applications we've received, just in terms of numbers in the process?
At this point, I believe the total number we've received are 29 grant applications for the Small Business Relief Program. We are reviewing those internally. The deadline is Thursday at 4:00 p.m., so if there's any businesses out there that are planning on applying, haven't yet, just a couple of days left. Again, it's for businesses, you know, that have five full-time Cleveland employees or less, and there are some other guidelines, but the response has been good, and we've got quite a few applications that we'll be working through.
And remind me, what's the total number that's been set aside for that?
So the number is $40,000 was set aside initially. So yeah, that's the number.
If they all get the full amount, it would be 20.
Yeah. So it's up to $2,000. So it does give us some flexibility to tailor that, you know, whether $1,000 grants or $2,000. That'll be what we'll work through.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that?
Not about that. I just, something else. I know you were quoted in the news recently. Could you kind of reiterate again for residents who might be concerned about the concrete replacement?
Sure, sure. So, you know, the concrete program is really the first step in our annual resurfacing program. So, you know, the concrete notices go out, so the residents have received a concrete notice. If they're on a street that's going to be resurfaced, they've now received a notice that gives them what the city's contract price is and gives them a deadline to either have the concrete work done privately, or, you know, they can choose to do nothing and have the city's contractor do that work. It really, it definitely is sequential, so, you know, we can't get into actually paving the streets this fall until the concrete work is done first. But what we've certainly been stressing with folks is that if you choose to have the city's contractor do the work, you're not going to receive a bill until early 2021. So that's earliest you're actually going to actually, you know, get a bill from the city for the concrete work. And at that point, you're going to have the option of spreading those payments out over a five-year period. So I know we have had some calls about folks wanting to delay the concrete program. You know, if you delay the concrete program, you're essentially delaying or non-performing the paving program this fall, because we have a tight construction window to actually get the asphalt down. So, you know, glad to work with folks and, you know, try to, we have had questions about why my concrete was marked, things like that. If a resident has a question to that of that nature, reach out to our engineering department. We'll meet them on site and go over that with them.
And I think, if we're fresh in memory, but I think it's pretty typical anyway for us to get calls on why was my sidewalk marked?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that happens every single time.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a great update. Thank you. I didn't realize it was going to be nearly a year till they got a bill. And I also know that people have the option of kind of rolling it into their, like, mortgage payment. It gets them with their escrow.
Property taxes.
Property taxes, which goes in, which is paid through that. So how about how many, what percentage roughly of people do that in the past?
I can tell you the percentage of people who use the city's contractor is very high. I want to say it's probably in the, and Dan may know, like 80 or 90% range.
I was thinking it was, I mean, because it's easier just to have you take care of it, and spreading, and spreading the payment over five years.
Right.
That's big. Is huge. I mean, that's a long, it's really, and, I mean, and do you have a ballpark of like, if somebody had to have, like, I guess the most expensive thing would be if the whole apron had to be done?
The drive apron is typically going to be the larger, you know, cost if.
And most people don't have to do that.
Right, right.
So is it like?
Average assessment.
$1,500 average or?
The typical, the average assessment is probably in that, I'm going to say, $700 to $900 range.
Okay, so $800 divided over five years.
Five years, correct.
Right.
I think that people, that's what people need to know. It's $800 spread out over five years, and you don't get a bill for almost a year.
Yeah, typically, we send out.
Sadly, I don't think that, of course, that's not what the media latched onto.
That's not the headline.
I'm shocked.
That was not the headline, sadly. That was not the headline.
No private contractor is going to give you five years to pay a bill.
No, no private contractor is going to do that. So if you're handy, if you're handy and you have the time and you want to do it, knock yourself out. But if you're not handy, that's a pretty good deal.
Right. And all that information was provided, and it's been provided to all the residents. Typically, we send the notices out in the fall, but in speaking with the city engineer, we're going to defer that to early 2020, just to kind of give a little bit more gap. Plus, it's a, it's a large program this year, which means we're paving a lot of streets, so.
So they have more sidewalks and aprons to do.
Right.
Okay, I'm feeling good about $800 over five years. Feeling good about that.
I know. When I had to, when I was responsible for doing my entire front of my house.
The whole sidewalk?
My whole sidewalk, the entire sidewalk. And I debated, what should I do? Should I go with the city or do with a private contractor? And I went with the private contractor, and honestly, my experience wasn't great. And I wish I had gone with, I actually wish I had gone with the city. And to realize also for residents that there are specs, there are guidelines there. You just can't do that by, decide to do that by yourself. We have to have it regulated and uniformed and everything like that, but, you know.
And some people are able to do that.
And some people are.
Some are. I know a lot of super handy people, but I know if it were us, we would be having the city do it. My husband is particularly handy, but he's also particularly busy.
Yeah.
So I don't think when it comes, when we come around, which we're not on this one, I will have the city do it gladly. And because, and the reason you get such a good deal is that contractors doing your neighbors, you're doing your neighbors at the same time. So it's just easier for them just to go zoop, zoop, zoop.
Yep.
I had the unfortunate experience when I lived on Sage Street. All of my Mulberry Street, which is, was a fairly long sidewalk, had to, all of it had to be redone. We were digging up bricks from, I don't know how many years passed. It was a 1947 house. My contractor did a late-in-the-day delivery and got a hot load of concrete. I had to rip the entire sidewalk out.
Yeah.
And redo it. And I had a good contractor. And so it does, sometimes it doesn't pay to, it's just let them all do it at once, and, yeah, hard lesson learned. But the other thing.
That's my experience, too.
The other thing I'd like to speak to, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was asked questions, too, on this. Well, first, I wanted, now, the contractor is not related to any of us that I'm aware of.
That was, that's been the rumor.
We all live.
Seriously? That's the rumor?
Yeah, the rumor is.
I, who?
We all live in Lebanon. If you're on council, we live in Lebanon. Is it possible that a contractor could also live in Lebanon? That somebody could be a friend, a neighbor? We see him in Kroger. Of course. But do we come in here? We don't see the names of the contractors until the staff has basically selected the one that we think is the best. We don't see, they all get to submit bids. It's a fair process, and it's not my buddy or your cousin, or, it's not, but if we were to delay this, delay the concrete, which delays the paving, do we risk losing some of the grants that we received? Because they're ti, a lot of our grants are time-related, time-sensitive.
So for our annual paving program, there are no grants associated with that project. So there would be no grant, risk of grants associated with that. Obviously, we would have to void the contract, and we'd be looking at rebidding things in the future. So, you know, typically, when you rebid something, nine times out of 10, the costs go up on something like that. But it really, it really is a, we operate on such a tight timeline right now in terms of bidding, then getting the concrete work done, so then we can pave the streets in the fall, that there's just, there's just, you know, a month or two really starts pushing it outside of the paving window, because, you know, we can't mobilize our paving contractor until all of the concrete curb is done. We don't want to be damaging new streets or damaging new pavement with concrete work.
Well, sure, they use equipment that has outriggers that dig in and all that. But the total rebuilds, though, those, do we have grants involved in those?
Yeah, so like.
There are some places.
Road reconstruction projects, absolutely. Most, almost all of our road reconstruction, so, you know, like Monroe Road right now, or Summit Street later this year, those are almost always grant-supported.
And are those sidewalks on those streets included in the road, or do residents still have to do the sidewalks?
It depends. So a lot of times, we're changing the grade on the road, which means we have to redo all of the sidewalks, because the elevation of the curb has changed. So in that scenario, the property owners do not pay for that. That's part of the overall road reconstruction costs. So, no, they aren't billed for that type of work.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Discussion items. Mrs. Monroe, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Swite?
Just thank you to all the workers that are continuing to go to work and, you know, show up for work and provide services, whether it's our city employees or store workers. I know a lot of the grocery store workers still get beat up on a regular basis verbally, but
but, um, um, it just, you know, thanks for being there, thanks for coming in, and I think things are starting to calm down a little bit, I hope. That's all.
Councilor Shoup?
Uh, yeah, I, um, I have been just very much alarmed at the, um, broad powers that our governor and the, um, and Dr. Acton mandated upon us. Uh, and so, you know, just in a quick, uh, perusal of our Ohio constitution, of course, the Article One, the very first paragraph says, "All are by nature free and independent and have certain inalienable rights," which basically means they can't be taken away. Um, among which are, and it has several there, um, but especially, it says, "And possessing and protecting property and seeking and obtaining happiness and safety." Um, because they, their mandates have so restricted our businesses, especially our small business owners, um, I feel, and, um, that they have overstepped their bounds. They've used, um, as I was speaking with, um, our city attorney, Article thirty-two, is it, that, or Paragraph thirty-two in one of those later articles?
I think it's Chapter thirty-two, which gives the, sets up the Department of Health, um, excuse me, it sets up the Department of Health and then vests certain discretionary powers in the director.
Very, yes, very broadly interpreted those discretionary pow, powers in this case. Basically using, um, data that is being, um, brought out of an urban setting such as New York City and extrapolating that onto an entire state of people who live in some urban settings, but suburban and rural, um, in areas where the risk is not the same. Um, and, um, doing that in such a way that they are treating, um, all of our citizens of our state and of our city, um, as if we were children, unable to socially distance ourselves on our own and unable to make responsible decisions ourselves so that we protect ourselves and those around us. Um, and they've just mandated it with a broad, a very broad brush. And, um, I think we ought to do everything we can, um, and I'm not for, um, wasting city, um, assets pursuing something legally because, um, the state is going to, um, come out on top on that and that would just be a waste. But as much as we can, um, with, um, uh, through the media or, uh, through any other means, apply pressure to our governor to get him to consider, um, every citizen of our state and not just those who live in the metropolitan areas, um, and not try to give us a one-size-fits-all, um, cure, which is going to be worse, uh, than the disease. And, um, I believe that, um, lives are being damaged, um, and some lives are probably being lost because of the mandates on the hospitals, unable to do things that they call elective surgeries, which we're not talking about nose jobs and, and, you know, facelifts. Uh, we're talking about something being elective as in going in and having, um, procedures done, um, such as I had, um, for, uh, your arteries and such, um, if, if your life is in imminent danger. Um, so the idea of that has been very broadly, um, defined and very broadly applied. And, um, I think we need to apply as much pressure as we can to, um, to get, uh, redress of these grievances, as our constitution would say, um, and, uh, and get this thing turned around quickly, um, and allow people to care about one another. Um, it's not, it's not caring if you are threatened with going to jail for, for doing it, you know, for not doing it. It, it, um, uh, charity quits becoming charity when somebody is taxing you for it. And that's essentially what they're doing, although not monetarily, um, but when they pass these edicts, um, it is, uh, it takes away from the goodness of the people and attributes all of that goodness to one man, uh, sitting in one chair in Columbus. It's my opinion.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
I'm about to run a lap.
Yeah. Where's my, where's my hanky at?
Do you have anything?
I have nothing, thanks.
Um.
Well said, Doug.
Thank you.
And I'll, with my comments, I will say some things as well. Councilmember Matthews?
Uh, one of those, as Mr. Shoup mentioned, we have unalienable rights. One of those is to continue to vote, uh, the primary. The state legislature has set an all-mail-in conclusion to the primary, um, which extends, so if you have not yet voted, uh, because of the way our primary is set up, you have to request because there's four different primary ballots you can select from, uh, which is a lot easier to do in person. Uh, but, uh, in the, uh, the decisions from Columbus, this is the way it's being handled. So that request has to be made and then an official ballot from those four has to be sent to your address to mail, mail in. Uh, that is due, I believe the postmark is April twenty-seventh, uh, for those to be counted. And we have things that, a great deal of effect, writing on it, there's the Lebanon School Levy, there's Court of Appeals races, there's a county clerk that all of the citizens in the city of Lebanon can vote for. Uh, and, uh, on, and then also, I believe there's the, uh, primary for the U.S. Congress seat on the Democrat side. So there's a lot still to vote for. It's a bit more of a hassle than it normally is, but that still is available out there. I would like to say thank you so much for community organizations for stepping up. I know Main Street Lebanon is doing a lot, Chamber is doing a lot, and the city, all the staff and members, and all of the, the businesses and the individuals acting as the glue of the community that needs to be there. As, uh, Councilmember Wyatt mentioned, uh, that the people giving us groceries, providing food, they may not be getting the, the best from the customers, but that is where we're supposed to step up. Every smile, every interaction, even if distance, is a way to show that grace, show that community that we can. Uh, all of us should have that opportunity. It's, it's good to see people face to face, even if it's across the parking lot. So thank you to all the businesses that are really hustling, all of the people that are trying to do right, even in the small things.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Messer?
I just, uh, echo what everybody said so far. Um, and I think we're going to have to have a very poignant conversation about, are our rights really inalienable if they can be taken away, uh, if a virus hits our, our country? Um, what do those rights really even mean? Um, this isn't, this isn't, uh, this isn't wartime, this isn't, uh, this is, like Doug said, this is one guy in office, um, putting down executive orders. And, uh, I think that, that we as, as a municipality have a, have a duty to our constituents, just like he has a duty to his. Um, but there needs to be some sort of balance of power there. And I think that's something that we should do. Um, and then as far as the, the city, the city staff, I, I've, I've had nothing but, um, high praise from everybody that's been interacting, everybody at the city. Um, so thank you for, for the work that you guys are doing, uh, amidst of all this. And then Scott, have you had any, um, any interaction with, uh, the Health District in regards to any updates, any new flash updates that you've seen today or yesterday? Do you have anything updated?
Yeah, I did get, I did get an update, um, late this afternoon that I can, I can send to council. Um, I think, you know, if you're talking county-wide, I think the total number of cases in Warren County is around seventy-five to eighty-ish roughly, um, is, are the total number of cases. Uh, I can say in Lebanon, I think we're at six or seven at this point within the city. Um, but yes, I, I'll forward that to council this evening. Really, there's been no specific action, you know, county-related that I've seen, uh, recently. They've just been kind of mirroring what's coming from the state.
Do you know if any, we've had three deaths in the county, if any, do you know if any of them have been in town?
No.
They just reported three deaths. I think one of them is from Lebanon.
Okay.
I can't, I don't have that as confirmation, but.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
And I think one, uh, one glimmer of, of hope is, this is, as far as I know, right off the press, is that federally, they've abandoned the, these WHO, CDC models, um, that are, uh, that, as we can understand, have been very faulty. So they're, they're, they're starting to make decisions off our own data, off our own people. And, so I think that, that's going to create a, a much better situation for us moving forward, so we'll just, uh, just keep pushing forward and keep working together.
Yep.
Thank you. And just, uh, a few comments and, um, Councilwoman Shoup, I appreciate your, I appreciate your, your comments. Um, and as a city, I do believe that we are following the mandates that the governor has, has, I wouldn't say dictated, uh, but maybe.
It's good work.
That may be a word to use. Um, and we've been, we've, and I, I feel proud of our city and our residents and our businesses being able to do that. However, there, and Vice Mayor Messer and, uh, Mr. Yuric, we've had some individual conversations about what can we as a city, some control over our city as to what we can do to help our, to help our businesses, in particular, our small businesses. And we can't do anything independently, um, in terms of legally, we can't, we can't do anything. But my, my hope is, and I think a lot about, when I think about our residents and what we've all been going through and the mandates in particular, mandates in particular for mental health, alcohol and drug addiction where they're unable to meet. Um, so people can go to a Walmart, people can go to a Kroger, yes, social distance, but yet you have those that are most vulnerable not being able to meet, but through telecommunications and phone calls and lack of interaction. I, I'm very concerned about some of those mandates, absolutely, for our community, as that social distancing and isolation and fear and anxiety and apprehension continues and, and I hold some of the media responsible for that, actually. Um, and, and I'm hoping that our governor, as he takes a look at some of the things that he's put in place, that he has to look at, I almost want to say, come to our, look, come to our communities, talk to our businesses, talk to our residents and see what we are dealing with. Um, we eventually are going to need to get back into, getting back into real life. Um, that isolation for extended period of times is, is not, it's not realistic. It's not particularly healthy. And so I said, I think our community has done a fabulous job and I'm very proud of everything everybody's been doing. Um, as, um, Councilmember Matthews has said, that, um, community groups, whether it be the Chamber, whether it be Main Street, Elks, this group, this group, this group, this group, they're doing a fabulous job doing that. Um, however, we need to, there need, I'm hoping that our state takes a look at, um, good transition that doesn't crush, crush our small businesses. And if you talk to them, and I talk to them a lot, and I'm there and I go there, it's a huge struggle. And some of those dollars that are supposed to be coming in, some are coming in, but some are not coming in fast enough. And my hope is that we get back to, will it be back to the way it was before all this happened? Yes, we all support social distancing, we all, all support health and wellness, but we, we need to do that in a way that protects our rights, our constitutional rights, our ability to make good choices, because there are many in our community that make excellent choices. There's always going to be some that don't follow the rules. That's in, that's in life. Um, but the majority in our community have done a fabulous job. And I, I, I want our community, when this is all said and done, to get to a, to get to a better place and to survive and, um, do well again. And I'm hoping that our, our governor begins to see some of those things and begins to bring, give us back some of those things that we need within our, within our community and communities across the state.
Yes.
Um, so saying that, I think that's all I have to say.
For now.
For now. No. Um, Mr. Yuric, do you have anything more? Anything I want, or Dan or anybody want to say as well?
No. I mean, unfortunately, there are a couple of legal issues with cities doing anything at this point that are probably insurmountable. Um, one is a, a standing issue, which means basically, is the city the right person to bring a suit on behalf of businesses who have been harmed to the point of shutdown? And the answer to that is probably not. It's probably up to the business people themselves who have been, um, harmed. At this point anyway, um, we will, we will probably be harmed financially, but it's somewhat speculative because we don't, we don't have a good grip on what those are going to cause. But the, another sort of insurmountable, uh, hurdle would be the fact that the state has, you know, set up the Department of Health and they, it's a comprehensive legislation. There's a case called Canton versus Harris, uh, that tells you when something is a law of general applicability and when it's not. And courts have held that the, the, if the state puts together a comprehensive legislative, um, solution to a problem like setting up and establishing the Department of Health and the Director of the Department of Health, um, that cities are what's called preempted. In other words, we can't act, um, if the, the state has passed a statewide comprehensive legislative, uh, solution to an issue. Um, in this case, you know, these orders come from the Director of the Department of Health, who, whose position is established by this legislation. Um, she is appointed by the governor and works under, sort of, in, in his administration, but theoretically, uh, anyway, and some people may take a more skeptical view of, of this, theoretically, she is an independent medical professional who is supposed to only offer or, or promulgate orders that are based on medical science, good for the general population. Whether she's doing that or not i, is debatable. Um, I, I, I believe that, um, you know, she's probably doing the best she can. Uh, at any rate, um, those, those issues really keep a city from doing a lot, other than the things that we're trying to do, which is to, you know, again, as Scott mentioned, we're not shutting people's utilities off, we're not charging them late fees. We have this, you know, small business emergency assistance program, um, and, and there are, trust me, thousands of little things every day, little problems that come up with people. And we work with people generally during good times even, um, but I think we're especially, that the, Scott and the staff is especially, are especially sensitive to the fact that people are having a hard time. This is a huge sacrifice and we're trying to work with people, uh, as much as we can and do what we can. But, um, the state legislature has in, in their, within their purview, uh, promulgated a legislative scheme to deal with this. And since that is a statewide system, municipalities can't use home rule police power to set up their own sort of regimes. We're just, we're prohibited from doing that. It would be a, a pretty clear violation of law. Um, there are, um, as Mr. Shoup mentioned, certain, um, sections or, or, you know, if you read a constitution, a state constitution or the federal constitution, if you read it literally, there are certain passages that if you're not fully versed and trained in the case law, won't make sense to you. For example, "Life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness" is in a part of the constitution called a preamble in both the state and federal constitutions. Case law over the years has held those to be aspirational in nature and not the statement of a particular right. Um, like the Fourth Amendment right to be free from unreasonable surges and seizures. That's been held to be directly applicable to governments and that's a direct restriction of governmental power. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights to due process, those have been held to be directly applicable to, to regulate states' powers. Um, the, the broader sort of, um, contextual language in constitutions has held to not be directly applicable. So it can be, again, it can be, it can be confusing.
The, uh, the, one I referred to was the, um, Ohio Constitution, um, and the first paragraph of Article One of our Bill of Rights. So it wasn't in the preamble.
Okay.
And it does also use that in terminology, defending life and liberty and, um, you know, obtaining. obtaining happiness and safety. And that's listed as one of the ineligible rights in our constitution, not, you know, not in a preamble to it, so.
I just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want you to think I was referring to the U.S. Constitution when I said that.
Okay. You know, I, I didn't, I guess I wasn't having a, trying to have a, I wasn't specifically directing my comments to you. I was just saying, you know, in general, people do. It wasn't a point, counterpoint.
No, no, no. I get it.
I don't have. So at any rate, from, from a legal perspective, there's, there's not much we could do to, say, violate the Director of Health's orders. There's, that would not be acceptable. Could we even sue? I think that's highly questionable, at, at the very least, and would be a pretty massive undertaking. So I, you know, obviously, I'm not arguing with anybody's, I'm being very respectful of everyone's comments.
And in anybody's comments that we've made up here, that was not at all what I would even think to, to suggest at all. As I said, we're following the mandates set by the governor with no apprehension at all. It's, it's my hope that in moving forward, that in moving forward, that we, we are, that our state is cognizant of, that we are doing a great job, we are following the rules, nobody minimizes what is taking place at all. But in moving forward, that we begin to transition, as some of our data is suggesting, the flatlining of, of research now, to be able to bring back and re-engage our businesses and our residents in a way that will be healthy for our, our residents and our community.
Yep.
That we're not, that are, that are, that are our rights, that we, we're moving forward and not backwards, in terms of, of what, what the state expects us to do.
Well, and Mark, you're an attorney, and you have, I think, a tendency, anyway, to be very polite and respectful, and your choice of words is always careful. And so basically, what you've said is politely, you have said, saying "up yours" is not an option.
It really isn't.
And so that's kind of what you're saying, and I agree. It's really not an option.
Right.
What's sad, though, and I don't, and I don't, none of us really said we would sue, and it would never work.
No.
Because sadly, I believe, I have not polled them, but I believe the vast majority of our citizens are frankly okay with a loss of freedom. They're okay with it. And that's really scary.
Yes.
Because it's a precedent. So what's going, what is it going to be next time? It's going to be for something less significant, and it's going to be a greater overreach of power. It's about the distribution of power and how it is not equal. We do not have the power that we should have. They have power, and they're wielding it over us. And it, the precedent is more scary to me than the negative ramifications of what we're actually experiencing now. And I think most people are fine with it, and that's very sad.
Once you surrender those liberties, they're very difficult to get back. It's all, it's like in a negotiation for a sales, when you, when, or for a sale, when you, you know, once you put something out on the table, it's hard to take it back. It just, it doesn't happen easily. I'm sorry, who did I talk over there?
No, I talked over you. That was my turn.
That's all. Go ahead.
You're, you're, you're right. I mean, and I wasn't, I wasn't implying lawsuits either, because from what I've understood and read, it lines up with directly what Mark is saying. I'm saying, we, we as a, as a board and as people who are working for our constituents, put as much political and individual pressure on our legislators and our governor as, as we feel necessary, because we, we've seen what, what they can do with the stroke of a pen. And I, for one, am not for that. And I am, I've been, I haven't been pleased with, with how they've handled things. So that's where I'm at.
Yep. Mayor, if I can, I was just really trying to explain for, to the general public, you know.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the general public realizes that this body has never wanted to ever proceed in doing anything against or toward the state at all, that we absolutely do, absolutely do support. At this point, we're following the rules.
Yep.
We are abiding by the rules. We've always said that the city would follow exactly the mandate of, mandates of the state. So we are, are, are doing that, absolutely. And there was no ever that, I mean, you know, to do anything legally. It's just, again, I will say this, it, to this point now and moving forward, that we are moving forward and gaining our, or use our rights back, some of our, our rights and our ability to make good decisions for ourselves.
Yep.
Please give us, as residents, credit for being responsible citizens, because I think, I think we are. I think we are responsible citizens. I think we do know what to do. I see it every single day when I go anyplace, I, I see it happening. And give, state, give us credit for taking care of ourselves. Personal responsibility is very, very important. And, Councilwoman Monroe, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, but I do talk to a, a number of people who feel the same way that we do. When you talk individually with them, they do believe some of what we are talking about. They may not say it out loud because of fear of what some people would say, but I do think there are some people out there that absolutely do support some of what we are doing.
There definitely are some, but I just don't think there's as many as there should be. We're always, we're always going to disagree. I mean, we have political disagreements, we have social disagreements, we're going to disagree, but I, I wish it wasn't, I wish more people were concerned.
I would have a true understanding of, of, not just of what's happening right now.
Right.
But the bigger, the bigger picture.
The long-term ramifications.
Long-term ramifications of this, long-term ramifications, yes.
I was, I was having a conversation earlier today, and I, I made the point that the thing that I'm, I'm kind of excited about all of this is, is there are more people I have, didn't realize, are talking about their rights, their freedoms, than I have ever seen or heard talk about it in the past. So it is, it is opening up a new dialogue in our community, and it's opening up a new understanding of, of our founding and, and what we are born with, and the, the level of, of personal independence that we have. Just double down on what Ms. Monroe, Mrs. Monroe said, I wish there were more, and I think that every day that passes, more people will begin to look into this, and I think we will have more, a, a greater ability to put pressure where pressure is needed to be put. So we might not have any legal standing to do anything at this point. We'll do what we can in the, know what you're supposed to do in the, in the times that you're in. So we'll just keep, keep doing what we're doing.
I think, Mayor, chiming in with the mayor, we are doing a great job of the social distancing, but to, to add from the medical context that I have, this is different. This, this has a different airborne property than, than some of the things we've seen and the ones that aren't practicing good social distance, the ones that, I think about when the governor first made a statement about social distancing, and then over that day, he's getting all these pictures of people in bars, and that's kind of when he said, "Okay, you can't do this on your own, we'll make you do it." I have a friend that's a nurse, different state. She had a patient come off a ventilator, and he said, "I have to admit, I'm a victim on my own," and he said a rear body part attitude. He said, "I said, I'm not, you're taking, you're not taking my freedoms," went to a party that had about fifty people, half of them have tested positive, four or five of them ended up on vents, because they didn't take it seriously, and they all came down with it. So you've got that element that I think is driving a lot of it.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of times, we hear those things, and they're true, and they're valid. But anecdotal evidence tends to get repeated in the same, you know, what we need to take a look at as a society and as a, as a state and as a city is, are the numbers, you know, and numbers don't bear out some of the anecdotal stories and some of the terrible things that people have gone through because of this virus. I mean, I'm not downplaying that at all. But there's also a very real risk to the destruction of families and of the mental health of others and, you know, that a sustained period like this of lockdown can do to a society as a whole. And those are numbers that aren't as easy to put your thumb on, and, and the stories perhaps aren't as dramatic, but the lives destroyed are just as real. And, and so it's, you know, it's kind of one of the illustrations I've heard that it was helpful to me is, you know, while we, you know, we all understand that we must take our own personal responsibility, and we take risks every day, there's trade-offs every day. We don't advocate for a thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit on the interstate highways, even though we know that there is data there that says we would save lives. And so this whole argument of if it saves just one life, it was worth it. I know it sounds callous, and I'm not, I'm not try, I'm, I'm just saying, we make those kind of decisions every day, and we say, "You know what? Our society needs to be able to go, to move forward, and people need to be responsible for themselves." And if those two things go together, then everybody's happy. And, and that's what we need.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Schaefer.
So just about every day, you, you hear an update from our president or our governor. President is always talking about all the governors he's in contact with on a daily basis, and the governor, he's always saying, "Oh, we've, we've been talking to the White House and, and all this." Can we put together a letter with some of our thoughts to send to the governor or make a call? I mean, is anybody else up for that?
Yes. I'm up for it. I don't know if we can do it as a body, but...
Yeah, I don't know if it's better as a body or individually, I don't know.
I'd sign it.
Well, it depends on what it said.
Well, I'm sure.
I had to read it first.
We need to do, let's think about that.
We can think on that.
Let's think about that, think about that.
Because if, 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 if they're not aware of, if they're only looking at a certain set of data, they don't have the full story of what's going on in our town, and if we voice that to the governor's office...
The governor lives in Yellow Springs. I think they're hit harder than we are, so I don't think he's ignorant to how it's killing small businesses.
Oh, he knows, he knows what it's doing.
They know.
He knows what it's doing.
They're, they're not unaware.
Yeah.
I really believe that they are very aware.
I think, I think the point that's being, what's being made is the, where the pressure can be applied at this point in time. And I would be fine with applying that type of pressure to our state government. Like, that would be totally fine with me. Because I, I think that most of this stuff should be dealt with on a district-wide basis. So, I mean, we're not the only country dealing with this, and there are, there are plenty of countries that are, that are using that exact model and using it with success. So, and we're supposed to be the beacon of freedom. Why is this so hard for us to figure out? I'm going to get on the soapbox, I'm going to just stop talking.
Did you want to say something?
No, I'm good, no, I'm good.
Call me later, Mark.
Uh, Councilwoman Matthews, I, I want to, I know you're, you're listening. I want to make sure, in case you would like to say something, you can. If not, it's fine, too. I just want to make sure you're included if you would like to say anything.
Um, I'm, I'm good. It's, it's a, it's a great discussion. We need to represent our constituents. And having some voice, we have State Representative Zeltwanger, our State Senator Wilson, that should be our voices and should be accountable for us, and providing pressure however need be, that may be more direct. I'm sure the governor has, is getting a lot of communication, but we are a significant portion. We have a, those types of pressure can be provided there. And there, there's a lot of good things being said, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think it's been a, a good, good discussion. Thank you all very much. So I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to close our meeting.
Does it move?
Sir, second.
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 Um, please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Shope.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Yes.
And Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone, for joining our meeting Tuesday, April fourteenth, 2020. Just a reminder, we will not have a meeting, work section, session next week, but we'll be at a voting meeting here in chambers. Have a good evening, stay healthy and stay safe. Thank you.